Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Meeting for February. Before we move into our meeting agenda, we have a presentation tonight that I look forward to every year. It is our Vital Signs Roadshow and it is going to be done by the Nashville Chamber tonight. So, welcome and thanks for being here.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to thank Mayor Reed and the council for having us tonight. Here, let me... Okay. So, I'm Joanna McCall. I'm a coordinator of Applied Research at the Chamber of Commerce, Nashville area, and I'd like to present our Vital Signs research. Let me get the first slide up there. So, our 2018 Vital Signs Report is developed in partnership with the Greater Nashville Regional Council, which serves as a federally designated metropolitan planning organization for the Nashville area. So, we want to quickly acknowledge our partner GNRC, which provides data and analysis especially around demographics and infrastructure. Our supporting sponsors, Barge Design Solutions and First Bank, and Tennessean was our media partner. So, unlike previous vital signs, our 2018 report highlights changes within the region over 10 years since the Great Recession, and it examines how these changes in growth have impacted Middle Tennessee. The 2018 Region Vital Signs examines patterns and trends in Middle Tennessee for these categories: the region's growth, workforce and education, transit and infrastructure, and affordability and health. Tonight's presentation will include information where available specific to Smyrna and Rutherford County. So, regards to growth, are we ready? Workforce scarcity is the greatest challenge to job growth in the future for the region. The region as a whole has an unemployment rate lower than the national average of 3.9. National MSAs dropped to 2.3% in December 2018. Rutherford County's 2.3% as well, and Smyrna's unemployment rate is 2.1%. And these are from the monthly reports from the Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce Development. Now for a prediction, in the next 10 years, the fastest-growing occupations for the Smyrna area are projected to include jobs in automobile manufacturing, temporary help services, perishable prepared food manufacturing, and restaurants. Jobs pay, on average, between $30,000 and $35,000 for people with high school diplomas and some level of college in the Nashville MSA, and between $30,000 and $38,000 in Smyrna. Individuals with bachelor's, graduate, or professional degrees are averaging between $48,000 and $60,000 in the MSA and between $42,000 and $56,000 in Smyrna. Now, Smyrna's population is a bit behind the national average for attainment of bachelor's and other graduate or professional degrees. However, it's ahead of the national average for attainment of associate's degrees and other post-high school attainment. Across the board, variations in educational attainment align with labor force participation and unemployment and poverty rates. A person with less than a high school diploma is less likely to be in the labor force. In fact, in Smyrna, the population... or the labor force participation rate for this population is 63% compared to 82.6% for a high school graduate. Nearly a quarter of people with less than a high school diploma across the board are living in poverty and don't have the education and skills to secure a job with a livable Finding qualified workforce is a pressing issue for businesses in the Nashville region, regardless of size or industry, and not all Middle Tennesseans have benefited from the region's general growth. In many cases, the key is relevant education and training and a clear picture of what jobs are available in the future and the education and training needed to secure these jobs. It is up to pre-K to 12 school systems to create a pipeline of talent, as these children must be prepared to meet the challenges for our region's future. Pre-K to 12 and post-secondary pipelines are aided by programs such as the Academies of Nashville, Tennessee Promise, and Tennessee Reconnect. These programs have input from area employers that lead to post-secondary credentials aligned for today's workforce. Higher education institutions and employers must continue to work together to align education and training programs to industry needs and produce highly skilled workers who will be competitive in the job market. Onto transportation. May 2018 referendum in Davidson County was not successful as a step forward in the pursuit of an improved transit system for Middle Tennessee. However, 77% of respondents from a poll we conducted said it was important or very important for community leaders to try again... again to seek voter approval of a transit plan and dedicated funding. With a large investment of transit on hold, the 2018 Vital Signs shifted focus to include more information on the current state of the region's infrastructure, knowing that investing in and improving mobility in our infrastructure is a critical part of our future. The average commute time to work for a resident of Smyrna is 29.2 minutes, according to the American Community Survey, compared to the national average of 26.4 minutes. Additionally, Smyrna has 26,065 workers who are employed but living outside the area, which is 89% of total employed, and 18,521 individuals living in Smyrna but employed outside of the city, which is 85% of the total population. So, as to the affordability gap, a household is considered cost burden if it spends 30% or more of its monthly income on housing, or 20% or more on transportation. In the Nashville MSA, residents are spending an average of 53% combined. Median home prices in the city and county increased below the rate of the Nashville MSA from 50... sorry, $157,000 in Smyrna in 2010 to $162,000 in 2017, with a higher rate... with a higher rise in Rutherford County from $158,000 to $176,000 on average. However, affordability is still an issue for some residents of Smyrna, primarily because of transportation costs. Smyrna residents tend to spend 24% on housing and 25% on transportation, meaning that they are considered cost burdened due to transportation spending. The future success of the region depends on whether Middle Tennesseans can figure out a way to embrace new growth and ensure that residents who work within the region can also afford to live within the region and strike an affordable and livable balance when it comes to their housing and transportation costs. The Nashville area is known as the healthcare industry capital of the world. However, Middle Tennessee still has many poor health outcomes. Several factors are converging to make health an increasingly important topic for employers and communities. In Nashville and comparable metro areas, the past decade has seen a decline in the number of businesses that offer health insurance, from 69% in 2006 to less than 50% of all businesses in the area. Health is connected to all of the other issues we just covered: education, employment, transportation, housing, income, and the environment you live in. It's important for community leaders to see the impact all of these factors have on their population's health. So hopefully, this quick overview of Vital Signs 2018 has demonstrated that the issues addressed—workforce, mobility, affordability, and health—are critical to the health of our businesses, our communities, and our region. So, let me know if you have any questions.
Questions?
This is something at the mayor's caucus that we have a lot of discussion about, and I think it's all really important. I appreciate you all narrowing it down to Smyrna and how it affects us individually. And if council has any questions after this, then I know you all are more than welcome... willing to answer questions, and we'll pop you an email.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into our meeting agenda, and I will call the meeting to order. And tonight, I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Adkins to do our prayer, and our pledge is going to be done by the Smyrna High School bowling team. And so if everyone would please stand with me for prayer and pledge.
Mr. Bow. Father, we come to you today thankful for our town. We thank you for the leaders of our town, the citizens in our town, Father, the people that protect our town, those that are employees, our firemen, our policemen, those people that do the work here in this building, the streets, everything that they do each day to take care of our citizens. Father, we ask you to give guidance to our leaders, not only here, but also in our country, in our nation. And Father, just let them be discerning people. Let them learn that, Father, there's many of us out here that just want to see things fixed. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over all of us, each individually. We also... we also like to thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed on each of us personally. Continue to watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us. We pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all just want to stay right... oh, you all may be seated, but if you all want to stay right there, I'm going to let Ms. Diane do roll call, and then I'm going to move awards and recognition, so y'all are already standing. Ms. Diane, roll call.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Teegles.
Here.
Councilwoman Short.
Here.
Councilwoman Sullivan. Vice Mayor Adkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Ms. Diane, I'm going to change things around just a little bit and move to awards and recognition, since they're already up here. And tonight, we are lucky enough to have the Smyrna High School bowling team here, and we have a proclamation for you all. And I'm going to let Ms. Diane read the proclamation, and then we will talk a little bit about all your accomplishments this year. Ms. Diane?
Whereas the town of Smyrna is proud to be home to the outstanding Smyrna High School, and whereas the Smyrna High School bowling team proved once again that dedication, teamwork, and perseverance can lead to excellence, and whereas in attaining the 2019 state championship title, the team became the fifth Smyrna High School bowling team to achieve this accomplishment since 2005. And whereas team members—seniors Josh Meek, Xavier Paul Short, Blake Evans, and Timothy Smith; juniors Zachary Taylor and Adrian Rowe; sophomores Blake Davis and James Boone; and freshmen Elizabeth Cuda—remained focused and worked tirelessly to achieve this goal. And whereas the athleticism, skill, dedication, and heart with which the undefeated 2019 Bulldogs played this season is a credit to the excellence of this program. And whereas the town of Smyrna wishes not only to acknowledge this outstanding achievement, but also to wish continued success in future endeavors to each member of the team and coaching staff, Kelly Marlin and Carl Seiler. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and town council of the town of Smyrna join with all of the residents of Smyrna as we congratulate them on winning the 2019 state bowling championship and extend to them best wishes for continued success in all of their endeavors. Proclaim this 12th day of February 2019.
Thanks, Ms. Diane. To it. I'm going to let you all come up here and face this way, because I bet we have some parents that are here that might want to get some pictures. But we would just... each... the council would like to congratulate you and tell you how much we appreciate you being ambassadors for our town, and we know you all have worked very hard. Mark Adkins, our vice mayor, said he's sure that he can take any one of you in a game of bowling anytime, so I think all of us would like to see that.
There's a game called gutter ball.
And Chief Bill is our official photographer, so... good parents, we all good? Oh, Mr. Dan, okay.
Okay, I'm going to let each of you tell us who you are, since you're on TV, and tell us what grade you're in.
Blake Evans, senior.
Blake, I'm going to let you pass it to the coach, too. Coach, what grade are you in?
Coach Carl Seiler.
Josh Meek, 12th grade.
Timothy Smith, 12th grade.
Xavier Paul Short, 12th grade.
Elizabeth Cuda, 9th grade.
James Boone, 10th grade.
Blake Davis, 10th grade.
Aaron Rowe, 11th grade.
Zach Taylor, 11th grade.
Kelly Marlin, coach.
Are you our only female? Yeah! So I'm sure you have to keep these guys in line. She carried you! Ah, there we go! There we go! Well, again, thank you all very much. Another addition that you will see, Brian, about how long do we think it'll be?
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks. As you enter the town limits, you will see the addition of the state bowling champs added. Oh, and there's what the sign will look like. Yeah. So. Here you go. Here's your proclamation, and congratulations. Thank you all for being with us. You all are welcome to stay for the meeting if you'd like to, but if not, we understand, and we understand if you'd like to exit. So, you may do so at this time if you don't want to stay for the meeting. No, not council, sorry. Everybody but council. We skipped item three and four, so Ms. Diane... approval or corrections of the minutes of the January 8th, January 30th, and January 31st, 2019 meeting. Jeff, are these in order?
They're in order, ma'am.
They're in order, so do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian, any correspondence or communications tonight?
Not at this time.
Okay. Awards and recognitions, we've already covered, and we will move on to our consent agenda, which are items that are deemed by the town manager to be routine, that do not have to be voted on individually. If there is an item that a council member would like to pull out and vote on individually, we can do that. I do like to read the consent agenda, just so people in the audience and at home know exactly what we're voting on. The first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation relative to utility relocation for the Enon Springs Road West project. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Energy Land and Infrastructure, ELI, relative to the preparation of a grant application for milling and resurfacing Old Nashville Highway and sidewalk ramp improvements for ADA compliance. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Daniel Peterson CPA relative to working with CUSI Utilities Billing System to complete monthly sales tax reports. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Pyro Shows relative to our 2019 Independence Day Firework Show. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension contract with Vision relative to the website design services. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a change order with ROMAT Construction relative to additional work for the Captain Jeff Kuss Memorial. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Reagan Smith Associates relative to design services for 38 Lowry Street, formerly the Tire World. And item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the town of Smyrna relative to the tree replacement along the Jefferson Springs-Greenway extension. Is there any item that a council member would like to take off the consent agenda to talk about individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Motion to approve. A second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to our old business. Tonight, we have two public hearings. Our first public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27H, Group F, Partial 31.00, containing approximately 1.7 acres. It's requested by Mary Jenkins-Klein to go from R2 to R2 with historic overlay. This property is located at 112 Oak Streak in this Oak Street, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, there are no changes to this since you looked at it on first reading. This would just add this property to the historic overlay. This property has a home on it. It has already been recognized and is on the National Register of Historic Places, and so the property owner just has requested it be in our historic overlay as well. The Historic Zoning Commission did review it and recommended it to the Planning Commission, which then did recommend it unanimously to you.
Questions for Kevin? We've talked about this quite a bit. Okay, nothing for Kevin. Then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move to approve.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, a portion of Partial 53.00, containing approximately 73.85 acres. It's requested by Jerry Butler to go from R3 to PRD. The property is located on Big Sun Lane, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a piece of property that's... has been passed on first reading. Again, no changes from first reading to second reading. Is... rezoned this property to a PRD from R3. It will be completely a single-family PRD. We did include the in-your-packet, the pattern book, and everything that came along with that. It is a 261-lot development. Planning Commission did review it and did recommend it to you unanimously with four conditions, which are detailed on your agenda summary.
Questions for Kevin? We had quite a bit of discussion about this at our workshop. Seeing no questions for Kevin, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our new business under the Planning Commission report, our first item is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance relative to amending Article 5, Section 5.055.0 regarding setbacks in the A1 District, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. It would amend the district, the A1 Airport District, so that the setback... front setback would be changed from 100 feet to 50 feet. Side and rear setbacks would be changed from 50 to 25, and there would also be language specifically stating that the front setback is measured from the public right-of-way, just so there's no confusion from a taxiway or runway or something like that. This was requested by the Airport Authority Board. They do own all property that lies within this district, and the Planning Commission did review it and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this, or Tim or Mark, anything you want to add?
We have no issues at all. This is pretty much standard in all areas, correct, all zones?
Yeah, this was a... the airport used to be zoned I-3, the heavy industrial district, and so when we created the A1 District, we kind of moved the same setbacks over. And that's worked for the most part, but this started becoming an issue as they developed that south side in that area, so I did request this change.
Any other questions?
Just confirming that it just affects the airport property.
It would only be the airport property, yes.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion plant... motion passes. Item 2 is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 33, Partial 71.00 and 71.01, containing approximately 12.61 acres. It's requested by Alcorn Properties to go from R1 to PUD. The property is located on Rocky Fork Road, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a rezoning request. It's on Rocky Fork Road. It is at the intersection with Big Sun Lane, which is entrance code back to the new schools. Land use plan would support an office-retail multifamily mix here. Surrounding zoning is R1 and R3. The proposed pod is for an 87-unit townhouse development to be known as Cedar Creek, with two commercial lots that would be developed utilizing C4 guidelines. Access would be from Rocky Fork Road and Percival Street for the townhouses. Future access for the commercial lots is to be determined once those site plans are submitted. I did, again, attach the pattern book, which had all the details about the particular elevations and layout and everything with that. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend it to you unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this?
So, all the changes that we discussed the first time this was brought, they've incorporated into the new plan?
Yes. Yeah, as far as they changed the elevation, so there's no more vinyl. They talked... the screening on the back on the Percival Street side was one of the things. The extra parking that was discussed.
Right. They added double-wide parking in front of all the units and added some guest parking spots where we asked them to. So, everything... we kind of put them through the grinder on this one, and they've come back and done everything that we've asked them to do, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add that, you know, the first go-around, I initially opposed this because I was concerned how Rocky Fork, Enon Springs, was going to develop out, and since that time, we had a meeting and we discussed how we would proceed with an overlay. And with that, and when you see the land use plan would support this, and keeping in mind the materials that are going to be used, and the fact that this meets the land use plan as far as office-retail multifamily, I now support it.
Any other questions or comments?
Does the pod done?
Call for HOA.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
So, remember we had that discussion? That was one of the things we were requesting, that they do have an HOA.
These are for sale.
Yeah.
So, these are, as you said, for sale. They're not going to be rented. They're going to be sold.
There's no guarantee that an owner couldn't rent one later, but they're for sale. They're not putting them out there for rental property, so. And this did start as a 99-unit subdivision. I think it's down to 87 now, and some of the things that we asked them to do required that they remove some lots and lose some of those, but through the process of going through planning a couple of times, being rejected a couple of times, and then having a long conversation with them, I mean, everything that we asked them to do, they've submitted it to us, so.
Well, I think we all agree that if and when the interchange comes, this is going to be a main corridor into the town, and we're only going to get one chance to get it right.
That's why we want it to look as good as we've asked it to be.
Right. And so, Kevin, I also appreciate your department making sure that ones that are coming in know what we as a counselor wanting to see, and what the Planning Commission's wanting to see in that corridor and other places as well, so. Any other questions or comments for Kevin? Not, then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning request to amend the approved PRD of properties located on Tax Map 54, Partial 49.00, 52.00, and 52.01, containing approximately 122 acres, requested by Cedar Hills Holding LP. Properties are located south of Morton Lane, and this is a first reading.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a request to amend the existing Cedar Hills PRD This is Mayor and Council, this is a request to amend the existing Cedar Hills PRD. Again, this, this property is located south of Morton Lane. It also is adjacent to Cedarstone Community Park. It also has road frontage and access to Rocky Fork County Road. Again, land use plan would support a mix office-retail multifamily here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and the Amberton PRD in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The proposed amendments would actually, it would decrease the number of lots that are within the development that are 52 feet wide, and increase the number, minimum lot width for the rest of those lots would be from 60 feet to 62 feet. Also decrease the side setbacks for the 62-foot wide lots from seven and a half to six feet. The overall amendment would not change the type of homes, their proposed amenities, road layouts, or anything like that. I did, again, attach the pattern book that was submitted. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, 6-4, 0 against with one abstention, with three conditions, which I, are on your agenda summary, basically put the HVAC units in the rear to show the proposed utility extensions that would serve that development through the, through that development, and the new roadway that connection at Rocky Fork County Road to line that up with Riley Road. And that's all I got.
Questions for Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin, on this, would that change the number of lots total?
No, total lots number is not changing. It's just changing, there's going to be fewer of the narrower lots and more of the little bit wider lots. The overall number's not changing.
And I think when I was, when I was watching it on TV, you guys had a small discussion, it didn't go very long, about, there was a size, I think it's five feet or five and a half that normally would require more than the siding on the side, like brick or something?
Yeah, yeah. This one was approved, we, we have started now on anything with a five-foot side setback to require some form of masonry, whether that's masonry siding, or brick or stone on the sides. This one was approved before we started doing that, so this has an approval already existing. The 52-foot wide lots have a five-foot setback already. The wider lots would, this would go from seven and a half to six, but, and the, the approval is on the sides to, the minimum is a vinyl siding on the sides and rear elevation.
So, we do have some that are five feet that will have the siding on, is that correct?
Yes. And they're under construction already, and they, they primarily wanted to keep, they already have some homes under construction, I think they just wanted to keep that consistent throughout the development. So, we, I did, we did talk to them about picking that change, and they did make that request, so. For consistency of homes, that's, since they already have some under construction out there.
Did you want them to make the change?
I, I, I'd ask them to, to go back to, to on-the-side elevations, yeah, since we were going to narrower, but they did make that request, and to keep it, to be consistent with what they have already started building out there.
That was one of my concerns as well, but in watching the, the actual meeting, I understood why it was agreed to keep some consistency in this project and allow the, the type of siding that they're using to continue to go forward. How many phases will there be?
I can't rec, four or five, I think. Phase one is under construction already, that's where they're building homes now. Phase two has been approved also, so I think they have, maybe are just in the very beginning stages of construction on phase two, as far as the grading permit and that sort of thing.
Well, I, I understand the need to try to be as consistent as possible, so.
Well, and, and I think historically, you know, when we've gone across industrial, commercial, and residential, whenever there's been an addition to something that's already existing, we've tried to be consistent and allow what's there, and I think, again, for me, that we're decreasing the number of 52-foot wide lots, plus we're moving the HVAC systems to the back. We're just, you know, we're over that five-foot
Setback.
setback, barely, at six. So, there were, there were, you know, it, there was discussion and a lot of consideration, and, you know, it was something I thought carefully through, and when it's all said and done, I feel this is the right thing to do. Further ad, just so you guys know, I actually had a discussion with Kevin afterwards, and it's something where I, I do want to look at our PRDs going forward to make sure that when we're, if we're looking at the, the smaller setbacks, that we're being consistent, and which we have been as a Planning Commission, but I think maybe we need to move it to being a little more formal, as far as what we're looking at. So, I think that's something that Kevin's going to work on and put together for us for a Planning Commission, and we'll, we'll review and then bring it before the, the council here.
When you say consistent, you're talking about the setbacks, or you're talking about the materials?
Materials.
Yeah, when, when those setbacks, the five-foot setbacks, we're actually formally putting that in some, into the zoning ordinance in some manner, yeah.
Kevin, if we approved this, does this box you in later on?
No, I think each PRD has to stand on its own, so. Any zoning requests?
Other questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
A motion we approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion?
Show me a not voting, please.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Our item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 27P, group C, parcel 8.00, containing approximately 0.4 acre. It's requested by Ed Davenport to go from R2 to C4. The property is located at 407 Hazelwood Drive, and it is a first reading.
This is a request, as you said, at 407 Hazelwood Drive. It's about 270 feet north at the intersection of Hazelwood Drive with Enin Springs West. Land use plan would support a downtown mixed-use type development in this area. Surrounding zoning is R2 and C2. There is a parcel approximately 75 feet south of this site that is zoned C4. There is an existing house on this track that will remain as a part of the development. Planning Commission did review this and did recommend it, 6-4, 0 against with one abstention.
Questions for Kevin on this? Any discussion from Mark or Tim?
Again, this one's pretty easy for us.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and we've had a lot of success in this area. I can think of the Dempsey-Dilling office as a fine example of a home that, that's been repurposed into an office, and, you know, it's one of those kind of showpieces on Hazelwood, and we envision this being the same. Plus, you know, we're C2, C4 already in this area, so I support this.
I can see evolutionary where this area will join with the downtown district down there and be commercial most of the way.
Okay, do I have a motion?
A motion we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our fifth item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 19, parcel 33.00, containing approximately 4.11 acres. It's requested by Gary Duncan to go from I-2 to PUD. The property is located at 100G Street, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
This, uh, request is, is at 100G Street, at the intersection of G Street and Sammerly Parkway East. That land use plan would support a lot of industrial and commercial development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of I-1, I-2, and C2. The proposed PUDs for the existing I-2 uses to remain and be a part of it, with the added use of retail automobile sales inside the existing building that is on the property. Setback signage, other requirements would follow the I-2 guidelines. This use is required by the zoning ordinance to have 50 parking spaces, and that the applicant did request an exception to that. And that, that requirement is assuming that the inventory would be stored in the parking lot, and as that's not the case with this application, staff is supportive of that exception. They, the parking area, they are actually adding some parking to the site, but it would be just for employees and customers. I did, again, attach the pattern book, which details all the layout and utilities, et cetera. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this?
So, you said something in the, about the parking spaces, but I didn't follow how you said it that time.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, the zoning ordinance requires for automobile sales, retail automobile sales, to have a parking space, minimum of 50 spaces. When we wrote that, that was with the idea that there would be inventory as part of that parking area, and as there would not be any inventory, and this will all be just for customers and employees, so that's why they requested the exception to that, and we were okay with, with that.
So, it's going from 50 to 32, if I'm not mistaken?
I believe it's, we're having 32, right.
Okay.
Right.
And I, when I was listening to it, they were talking about the fence. It looks like it's going to be a nice fence. I wasn't quite sure exactly where they were putting it in.
Yeah, it's basically going to be on the, well, from the building, on the G Street side, from the building northward, and then I think down the both, kind of both rear property at the north and eastern property lines, as well as across the Sammerly Parkway frontage as well, kind of till you get closer to the, the front of the building, or on the G Street front of the building.
Anything else for Kevin?
No, but one of the things that I think, if you want to use the word a little bit excited about, a lot of times we think of cars, and we think, gosh, here we go again. But this is nothing like that. This is museum-quality things and all indoor storage. In addition to that, from Planning Commission meeting, we discovered they plan to make a lot of improvements to the exterior of this building as well, which will really lend to sprucing that corner up, so. There's nothing bad that we could find about this, and so, saying that, if you need a motion, I'll be glad to give you one.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I add, this is only, as I understand, the second facility like this in, in the country, and there's anticipation that there'll be, you know, internet viewing of the vehicles and sales, and, and folks will be traveling here, you know, whether it's local, they'll be traveling into Smyrna. Also, opportunity for, you know, our retail establishments, there'll be probably some overnight stays at our hotels, and I'm, I'm with Mark, you know, we're taking a vacant building that's in serious need of rehabilitation, removing a unique business into this that will benefit the town in so many different ways. That is a project that I'm excited about, and I'll let Mark proceed.
Oh, for you?
I'll second you.
So, got a motion and a second discussion?
I was just going to say one, yes, I was going to discuss.
Thank you.
The one thing that I am, have found that is key for me is that everything is taking place inside this building, and so to know that they are going to come and create a product, as well as a facility, that is going to look, look great, is important to me, and so I, I appreciate that they're going to fix up this building, as well as the type of buil, business and uniqueness that they are bringing with this, with this product that they have.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28M, group C, parcel 4.00, containing approximately half an acre, requested by Abhi Patra to go from R2 to R4. The property is located at 507 Enin Springs Road West, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request to rezone this property from R2 to R4. The property is about half an acre, it's about 440 feet west at the intersection with Colas Street, there along Enin Springs West. Land use plan would support downtown mixed-use development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R2. There is a parcel approximately 125 feet east of this site that is zoned R4. This parcel also has frontage on Frank Street. There is an existing house on this track. They would, the plan is to, to leave that track, or leave that home there, and then provide a, divide the parcel as well, kind of similar to what was done east of here, and divide it into two, two tracts of land, and develop the other tract with an R4, or consistent with the R4 zone. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin?
Do they plan on accessing the second house off of Frank Street, or?
The access would be off of Frank Street. The, the homes that were built, the Habitat for Humanity built down the street, we did provide, did require an access from Enin Springs for emergency services purposes. The water on Frank Street is not adequate for fire suppression, and so we provided that. There's any, what we had recommended to the, to the owner, and they were completely fine with that, would be to provide access. Emergency per, access would be through, from Enin Springs Road, and there would be an easement on the plat to show that, similar to what was done for the Habitat for Humanity homes that were done. As far as access, day-to-day access to the new home, it would be from Frank Street.
If fire trucks had to go in there, they're going to come in from Enin Springs? But there's, but there's, is that road going to go all the way straight through, or is it still going to stop, that driveway on Enin Springs, is it going to stop there, or would it connect with the other driveway on, on Frank Street?
What was done, I believe what was done with the one to the east there was, it, I don't think it did, it didn't go all the way through, but there is an access, enough access that they could get, the access to the rear lot from that lot, so. It would have, it would be an easement, recorded easement, they couldn't fence across it or anything like that, it would have to remain open.
Just, I'm just curious, I guess, as much as anything that brings up a question for me is, how does the fire department know there's an easement there?
Window. And they, and they have fences too, already, to prevent us from getting through.
But yet, if you access it through Frank Street, you don't have enough water pressure?
On the, no, sir.
Yeah, so, makes me scratch my head a little bit, is if the fire department were to be called out for an emergency to put a fire out, how in the world would they know, necessarily, that they can access it from Enin Springs and get water pressure from Enin Springs? Because they know Frank Street won't work. I guess they just go do it?
There's nothing on Frank Street to connect to, and, like I said, the other Habitat homes are already built fencing, so that's, that's a hindrance already.
If they, I mean, I wasn't aware of that, that they, they didn't get permission to do it from us, they just did it, so we can, if we needed to, we could go out and, through, through the codes department, could make them move those, because they are, the easement's there.
They're blocking the easement.
They're blocking the easement, they're not supposed, they're not supposed to do that. I mean, that was what, the whole idea, why we approved that was allowed for that, because we knew that, when the first one came through, the water pressure's not there. At some point, you know, we, we, I know Utilities is working on doing some upgrades to our water system, and eventually that may get corrected. Right now, that's not there, so.
Is that a?
We'll get the codes, and we'll take a look at those, and if there are violations, we'll make sure those are corrected.
Great. And I'm assuming that was probably done by Habitat, not by the homeowner?
The development was done by Habitat. I don't know who put the fence up.
Did it come after the fact, or did it put up, or did it structure?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Brian, that may be something we want to talk to Habitat, too.
I'm making notes as we talk.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So, how do we, there's no way to guarantee that's not going to happen on this property, or is it something that can be put in the approval to say, no fences, or?
Well, I mean, it are, yeah.
I mean, it's already there. I mean, it's, I mean, if they're on Habitat, we would, we don't have a plat yet for this one, but it would, we would, would require it as part of the plat if you, you all choose to rezon it, and they divide it in that manner. We would require it to be there, because that's the only way that the fire department has adequate water pressure to, to fight a fire.
So, for right now, we're just looking at consideration of rezoning versus, we don't have a plat in front of us.
Correct.
So, when, yeah, I'm sorry, site plan, so when we get the site plan in front of us, we can address those issues.
We certainly can, and of course, this one is the, different from what was before. You had a vacant tract before, and this one, they are remade, leaving the existing home, so you pretty much will be dictating, unless they, a future owner decides to do something different, you're dictating. There will be kind of an east-west lot property boundary with a property fronting Frank Street.
So, it'll actually have to be reset divided at, at the Planning Commission, correct?
Yeah, it'll have to, and that's, that's the reason they're asking for the zoning, is to be able to create a second lot that they can build on.
So, the owner of this request is actually the person that lives in house number one?
I don't know if they live there. I don't know if they live there, they own it.
They own it.
They live there.
You know, I asked this question in planning the other night about the driveway situation, are we gonna have dual driveways going out on Enon Springs? Just because I wanted to understand how that was gonna be, uh.
I mean, yeah, there, there would not be a second driveway at Enon Springs.
Right, but I'm just wondering, if, if this person's gonna own this home, from a fire safety perspective, should we just have a shared driveway? One access, one in and out from Enon Springs, that doesn't confuse anybody.
Yeah, that, that certainly could be an option, yeah, and not have access.
To Frank Street?
Frank Street, yeah, that could be an option.
I don't know if that makes it better or worse, but.
In, in line with what you were saying about that access, you were talking about that at the planning meeting, in the access on Frank Street, in that it's only, like, one way for a car to get down?
Yeah, Frank Street is not a very wide street. No, yeah, that's, no, I mean, it's not. It's, it's an alleyway, really.
It's an alley?
It's an alley. I mean, it's a public street.
It is a public.
I mean, it is public, but it's, it's not, it would not meet our current standards, certainly. But it's been there a long time, so.
I agree with Tim. I think we're just talking about a zoning now, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but when a site plan comes up, I think it's something we may want to discuss a little bit more in detail, and have the chief involved with it a little bit more, and just so we, we know that we're not creating something here that could be a potential fire hazard later.
And I, and I think we, we can look at the current situation, anything that's, that's been built on an easement, we can, through codes, get that removed.
Problem is, they never ask for permission, they just do it, and then, if we don't catch it right away.
We go out and monitor.
And they go make a call, there's a fence there, so.
But I think they'd be pretty upset if they had a, an emergency with a fire, and we were willing to.
Chief, would you just run that fence over with your bumper truck? Is that what you'd do?
No.
We'd, we'd back in.
Do you guys remember what we paid for that last one? Taking any fences down?
Well, members of the Planning Commission have heard our concerns when this comes back to you to address those concerns, so, um, do I?
Kevin, is there a reason, or what is the reason that the, the road juts into those two lots right there? Are they inconsistent?
On the south side there, you're talking about the Frank Street?
No, 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 at the top of it, next to Enon Springs.
Oh, the setbacks?
Yeah.
Why the, why that's there, I don't know. I don't know if that has something to do with, when we widened the road and we acquired right away, I don't know why that's different than the others. I honestly don't know. That, that's, that's straight from the property assessor's map, though, it's showing there, so. I haven't seen an actual survey of the property or anything at this point.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move to, to approve the rezoning of this property.
A motion to approve the rezoning, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map twenty-eight, part of parcel forty-four point zero zero, containing approximately twenty-two point twenty-six acres. It's requested by Gary Martin on behalf of R and J Family LP to go from R six to C two. The property is located on Sam Ridley Parkway West, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
This is on Sam Ridley Parkway. That's about fourteen hundred feet east of the intersection with Old Nashville Highway. Land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, and multifamily development here. This is to rezone approximately twenty-two point, twenty-six acres of a much larger tract that is currently all zoned, completely zoned R six, to rezone twenty-two point two-six acres of it to C two. Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin? Comments by Tim or Mark?
I think anytime we can replace R six with C two on road frontage at Sam Ridley, that's a benefit to the town for sure.
Agreed.
So, I think that's why we found favor with it.
Tim, anything?
No, totally agree.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last, um, item here is item eight, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map forty-nine, parcels two point zero zero and two point zero two, containing approximately three point zero three acres requested by Samuel Riyadh to go from R one to PRD. The properties are located on Old Nashville Highway, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor of Council, these are, properties are on Old Nashville Highway, about six hundred feet northwest of the intersection of Old Nashville Highway and Pioneer Drive. Land use plan would support commercial development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R one and PRD, which is Villas de Stewartspur. This proposed PUD is for a forty-eight unit townhouse development. It would be phase two of the Villas de Stewartspur, which is adjacent to the northwest. That section, or phase one, has thirty-eight units. Access would be from Old Nashville Highway. It would utilize Longfellow Lane, which is a private road that is a part of phase one, which is currently under construction. Again, I did attach the pattern book for the proposed development, which details all the layout and utilities, et cetera. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval, six for, one against.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Is phase one constructed?
It's not constructed, they are, I mean, they're moving dirt, and I don't think they've actually constructed any homes yet, they're just, are kind of under construction.
When was that approved?
Ten or twelve years ago. Long time. It's been through about three different property owners, I think, four, it's been.
Talk to me about the density on this one.
Well, the, the density in phase two is, is forty-eight units on a little over three acres, so it's, it's almost sixteen per acre. Phase one is thirty-eight units on a little over four acres, so it's about nine or so per acre on phase one. So, combined together, it's about twelve, phase one and phase two together.
I think, I was the dissenter on that vote, so you know, H G. And the reason I did is because, a couple of reasons, I think. One was, it, it, it just feels like the Old Nashville Highway is starting to really get inundated with these, but the density factor really comes into play. I mean, we just had a product in here forty-five minutes ago or so, that, well, we really made that developer do a lot of things to, to take that product and take the density down and take the materials up. And so, for me, it just felt like we were stuffing a lot of units in this three-acre tract right here, so.
So, I was on the other side of that, and I did vote for it. The thing I liked, or the reason I supported it, was number one, it added additional parking that could be shared between the two, the, the exteriors, um, were brick and hardy, Kevin, correct?
Correct.
Or cement fiber, I should say. There was actually added green space when we brought the other one in, so it, you know, for those reasons, and the fact that Old Nashville Highway, you know, can support this, was the reason I voted for it. But I, I fully see Mark's points.
A lot of what we're trying to do now is put double-wide parking in front of these units due to the hangover of the, the cars, no stacking ability in the driveways and things like that, and so, just, I guess I'm just trying to look for some consistency in the where we're going with the townhome product. It's, I know it's gonna cost a little bit more, but I think from a visual perspective, this does front the Old Nashville Highway in a, in a good way. And so, that, like I said, I, I'm not a, I'm not wanting to be negative towards the product, I just think there's some, a little bit of value that we can, to, to, to do to make it maybe a little bit better for product than what's proposed.
So, I had a, I was concerned about that, the parking and the stacking, but, and I had another question related to first responders, is it given enough room? If something were to happen, and first responders need to get in this space with all the density?
We did ask for a truck turning movement, and I believe they did, I think they did submit that to us. Parking, they do have two spaces in front of each unit. They have a one-car garage for each unit, but they do have the two spaces in addition to that in front of each unit, and then the, they added some on the, I guess that would be the southeast side of the private drive, that would be parking that could be utilized for both phases, as far as guest parking. But I did, we did submit that, I did receive that, I believe it showed everything was okay, I can confirm that for you. I believe, I'm pretty sure we did receive that.
Kevin, how long ago was phase one approved? It's been years.
From a zoning standpoint, it was, it was ten or twelve years ago.
Well, and that's, and so that's kind of where I'm going with it. This is, this is a new idea to us, and the old, the old product was approved under an old idea, so.
I voted against it, all that far back there, I remember that, and I, I don't see that this makes it any better, to be honest. I mean, you packed in that many more people in there, and I don't know, I felt like it was sandwiched in there between existing homes and the church, and, and I'm gonna go back and check my notes to see what, what else it was that turned me off of it before, but I just, I don't like this one any better.
I have concerns about the density as well, so, um, any other discussion? Then, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the request.
A motion to deny. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second to deny. Any other discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion is denied. And I hope this individual understands we're not opposed to the project, just there's some things we'd like, um, changed. Package liquor board report, no applications from the town council to consider at this time. Item C is consideration of a resolution for state revolving fund, three million dollar cap grant for the wastewater treatment plant expansion project. Mr. Strange, how are you tonight?
Yes, ma'am, doing well. How are you?
Great.
All right, this is the authorizing resolution for the SRF three million dollar cap grant. Within that, there will be ten percent principal forgiveness, and the interest rate is one point seven one percent, term is thirty years. So, once we get this, it'll move on to SRF, go through a committee or two, and then we'll be receiving the funding. I think the final committee should be into March, early April, when we get the fund.
Great. Questions for Mike on this? Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian, anything under other tonight?
Nothing under other.
Anything under status reports?
Under status reports, I'm gonna try to get this right. Just a couple of things I wanted to make everybody aware of. First, first I want to talk about, we are in the proceeds of working through our budget process, trying to get the budget ready for the council for our April retreat, and I just wanted to, first of all, say how much I appreciate Rex and the Finance Department and the work they've put into the preliminary budget review for us. And then over the last week and a half, Rex and I have met with every department head, and I just want to again say how much I appreciate the department heads preparing the budgets, coming in and keeping an open mind about our budget process. We anticipate having a very flat budget this year compared to last year, what we're seeing in the, on the revenue side with tax collections and those kind of things. We've not seen a slowdown in the market, but I think we've seen a very, very leveling in the market, and we're gonna build our budget based on that, so. I just wanted to show some appreciation under status reports for the, the, the department heads and Rex and the Finance Department, all the work that's been done. We're ver, working very diligently to have your books to you two weeks prior to the retreat, as we promised. I think we'll be able to hit that target, and I think you'll be impressed with what you see in the budget this year.
Great.
The other thing I would just want to bring up speed on, Jeff Craig mentioned at the workshop, you know, one of the things that we do, you know, from the town's perspective is a number one asset that we have is our employees. And we have been working with H R, and myself, and the department heads to put together something that really gives our employees a shot, a snapshot of the value of their job, not only the job they perform for us, but the way we recognize that job performance. And not just through the job, the performance review, but also through a, a, a good understanding for them of what the town invests in them. And we've got those documents ready, we'll be meeting with the department heads and the supervisors this week to do a training to get those sheets out to each individual, and those sheets are individualized to each employee based on their current earnings and the benefit package that they receive. I'm excited about that, I think it's gonna be an eye-opener for our employees, but we will have that ready to go out. We're meeting on Valentine's Day, actually, the fourteenth, to meet with the supervisors and the managers and the department heads to start getting that information into each hand of each of our employees, so I'm excited about that. So, that's all I've got under status report.
I'm also glad to see that we're moving forward with that. I agree, I think employees will be surprised when they see, I know we have had employees that have left the town of Smyrna, and we always hate to see employees go, but sometimes they think a higher base salary is, means that they're getting more in regards to pay, and sometimes they're not when you look at the entire package. So, I'm glad that we're able to show the employees that, so. So, it sounds like maybe you have something under announcements?
I do have something under announcements. I'm gonna put Kevin on the spot, one of the things, okay. March the seventh, I wasn't sure of the date, we'll be having a, a work session similar to what we did tonight on the roads, and it'll be, we'll be looking at the downtown overlay, so make sure you have that on your calendar for March the seventh. You know, I know it, it puts a lot of pressure on our council members to have to come in a little early, but we have a lot of things going on, and we want to make sure you're informed to the utmost. Kevin will be presenting the downtown overlay at the March seventh meeting at four o'clock, so please get that on your calendar. The last thing I have under announcements, we have it up on the board, but the Smyrna Event Center, the chef is doing a really good job down there, and as you know, we, we finished last year with a Sunday brunch in October, November, and December, and we've evaluated that. We, we're gonna continue to do some of those things, but our decision was to kind of mix it up a little bit. The next probably brunch we'll have will be around Mother's Day, we'll probably do Mother's Day and Easter again this year for sure, and then we'll probably do a couple of more intermittently. But one of the things we're gonna do is we're gonna try something a little different. You can't be from the south and not enjoy a fish fry on Friday night, so. We're gonna try to do, once a month, something along this event, so just to give you an idea, Friday, or, yeah, Friday, February the twenty-second, from five to eight P M, we'll be having a Smyrna Seafood Fest down at the town center. Go to the webpage and you'll see the menu, there's gonna be things like shrimp and grits, and catfish, fried catfish, oysters Rockefeller, some fried green tomatoes, some really cool things that the chefs putting together. The cost is fourteen ninety-five for adults, and that's all-inclusive. We'll also have a children's menu, we'll have children from six to twelve at seven dollars, and children five and, five and under at no charge, and we will have a kid-friendly menu set aside. And that means I don't want to see the council members over in the corner eating the chicken nuggets and the hot dogs. If you pay fourteen ninety-five, you're supposed to eat the fish, okay? But walk-ins will be welcome, but you may have to wait, we're getting pretty good response. I talked to the town center today, we're already getting reservations, so we're excited. You can call the, the town center at six one five four five nine four 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 to make a reservation, and it'll be the twenty-second from five to eight P M, and I recommend to get a reservation, even for the council.
I agree.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, um, I have, um, let me look at my agenda. Anything from you, Jeff?
I just want to let you know, after, you're gonna be making board appointments next month, Nathan and I will be teaching, offering two or three different times for new board members to basically have about an hour class to kind of get them in, prepared for open meetings and those types of things.
And it'll be a requirement for all new board members?
Yes, yes.
Good. Raquel?
What does Ms. Diane need to?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Diane, sorry.
Oh, I have nothing.
Okay.
Sorry. Just wanted to make sure.
Raquel?
Okay, I have a couple. Okay, I have a couple of things. I'd like to thank John Coleman Elementary. I was asked to come out and participate in their workday Wednesday last weekend, so they did, um, a brief interview for their students, and I wanted to thank them and Ms. Amy Warrior, uh, the teacher who invited me to come out. And also, I was able to speak at another event on this past weekend with Iota Phi Lambda Sorority, and that was held at the Hilltop Rosenwall Park, so I want to thank them for allowing me to be their special guest. And one more thing that you and I both got to do, um, and promote Smyrna and talk about Smyrna, Mayor Reed and I both participated on a Facebook, Facebook Live, yours was two weeks ago, and then mine was today, being able to discuss some of, a lot of the positive things that are going on here in Smyrna. So, I wanted to, uh, thank Jonathan Harmon for, um, wanting to do those interviews and having us on.
HG?
Right now, the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association, SIMA, is in the middle of a scavenger hunt. You can support your local independent businesses, uh, go on your Facebook page. I know each and every one of y'all have a Facebook page, but you can, uh, go to the SIMA page and, um, click on that and, and find out which business that you need to go to, so that, go see Jerome Dempsey back there, and some of them are, just have to go to the webpage for it, and some of them you need to go to the business itself. But, uh, there's some good prizes that you could win, uh, some cash prizes and some, uh, also just some gifts and things like that. Other than that, I just want to wish all of the, uh, the Valentines a very happy day as it comes up later this week. Thank y'all very much.
HG, usually the mayor has to remind us all about that, so I'm glad you're on your toes.
I was thinking with all the, the red that we've been seeing, I know, I mean, surely y'all would have gotten the hint, between the red and the pin and everything.
You think?
Well.
I get it, yeah, 'cause I didn't even think of it. And I'm wearing all this red. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Tim?
You know, um, I have taken your cue.
Good.
And there may have been some, already purchased for Valentine's for my wife, but, you know, seeing Ms. Dottie and Linda, uh, Ms. Diane, you and the red reminds, and you, my goodness. I am more than reminded and I am ready to go.
I don't know if you paid any attention at all, but you're about the only one up here that doesn't have any red on.
Well, I do.
That's not what you're for, Don.
Uh, point, point.
Well, I have to say, all the women out here have red on, and, you know, the subliminal messages, all that. So, Krispy Kreme was having a thing at the big, the first Friday of the month, and I kept telling Britt, they're doing the chocolate covered. Brian told him, guess what I didn't get the first Friday of the month. So, it doesn't always work, and so, um, hopefully, the first Friday of next month, he will get the message. I don't know what else I've gotta do, so, um, Jerry?
I don't know how to follow Tim.
Try not to.
I, I want to say, uh, councilwoman, peoples, you're being humbled, uh, humbling, I guess, uh, you did a great job on Sunday. I was able to go there as well, and, and she spoke and, uh, did a fantastic job, and so I was, I was pretty honored to be there. Couple of other things, uh, we've got a huge basketball tournament going on, uh, this week and next week. It's the district high school basketball at Smyrna High School. There are some really good teams, some that'll probably make it to the state tournament. This county's got some very good basketball teams, so if you get a chance and wanna come out and see some, I'm planning on being there for, for some of those. And then, uh, lastly, the, uh, Smyrna Sister City Exchange Program is having a benefit chili supper. That's going to be on Saturday, February the twenty-third. If anyone wants to do any sponsorships there, we've got about four different levels, but, uh, and we're also accepting applications for students now, so if you've got any, uh, anyone is interested in that, just contact Tiffany Lawson here at the, uh, at the town, the town center. That's it, Mayor.
Great. Mark?
I want to thank Tom Rose and Kevin for, uh, the meeting we had prior to this one. It was a public meeting, we had a lot of people show up for it regarding a lot of the roadwork that's planned for the town. You know, lots of arteries are being, uh, massaged right now and getting ready to be widened. Intersections around town that need help are getting ready to be helped, so it takes a little time. I kept hearing that from Tom, that was the resounding factor, and, and Brian kept saying, you know, don't think it's gonna happen tomorrow, it won't. But these things are being planned, they're being funded, so the citizens of Smyrna are as frustrated as we are about traffic every time we sit in it. Help's on the way, by the time it gets here, I'm not sure, yeah, we won't be catching up or not, but we're doing our very level best to keep the roads and infrastructure in our town moving forward. So, and I, I appreciate those guys for putting that together for us. Brian, I know you spent a lot of time on it as well, so. That said, the last thing I want to say is happy Valentine's to my Valentine of thirty-seven years, my wife Connie, so, that's all I have.
Great. Couple of items, um, we talked a little bit about boards and committees. We will be appointing those at our March meeting, you have until March the fourth to submit application. You can do that on the townofsmyrna.org website, and, um, it goes over each board and committee and tells a little bit about what that board does and when the board meets, and we would love to have you volunteer and join us on one of our boards or committees, and we will be making those appointments the, at the March board meeting. Our lifetime service and volunteer of the year banquet is Friday night at six thirty, dinner starts at six thirty. The program will start at seven, tickets are ten dollars, you can buy those at the door. It will be on Smyrna TV, and it is a wonderful evening to honor volunteers in our community. So many of the programs that are run here could not be done without the numerous volunteers, and some that no longer even have kids in the program, and they step up to help. So, um, we'll be honoring those individuals on Friday night. Our family safety expo at the Smyrna Event Center will be Saturday, March the thirtieth. This is something that's always well attended, and it will be from nine to two, so make sure to mark your calendars. Um, we'll be teaching you ways to protect your family and keep them safe. You will have fun, learn, and be prepared, so we want to invite everyone out, and the admission is free. Next, we have our Top Gun Run, which will be Friday, May the thirty-first at nine PM, and, um, this will be our inaugural Top Gun Run. It will be a six K, it will start at the event center and end at the Captain Jeff Coos Memorial. It's something that we are really excited about. It's a three point seven mile course. We will be prepared for those that are serious runners, and then those of us that are serious walkers will also be, um, included. I will tell you, the T-shirts are gonna be really cool, and the medals, to receive a T-shirt or medal, you will have to sign up. There will be live music and food trucks. If you don't want to walk or run, you can just come up and enjoy the evening with us, and it's something we're really excited about. Also want to mention a little bit with that, we're in the process of getting our website, we're moving our website from a donation-based website when we were trying to get the memorial built to a destination website for individuals who want to come and, um, see the Jeff Coos Memorial that aren't from here, that they can get more information, so we should be live with that.
End of next week, we are.
End of next week, and so, a lot of, Brian's done a ton of work on this, and we really appreciate all of his hard work, and I think it's something everybody's gonna be very proud of.
Mayor mentioned also, you can sign up for the run, but we also have sponsorships available if anyone would like to sponsor and just come out and watch the runners cross the finish line.
And it's gonna be a lot of fun, and the sponsorships, I think, have some cool ways of, um, advertising your business or individual, so. Um, our stormwater department is, will have three stream cleanup events during the spring. You can contact Greg Upham here at Town Hall. The first one will be March the twenty-third, April twentieth, and May the eleventh. And, um, any groups or individuals that'd like to come be a part of this, we would welcome you to come out. Our summer camp registrations open February the eighteenth for members, and will open for everyone else on March the fourth. If you are interested in our summer camps, we encourage you to register online at Community Pass, and they are always great summer camps for the kids. Just to let you know, Town Hall office will be closed Monday, February eighteenth in observance of Presidents' Day. And Brian, I also want to thank you for continuing to do the roads update meeting. I think it's something that's important to all of us, and obviously, by the amount of people we had there tonight, it's something that our citizens are interested in as well, so thanks for continuing to do that.
We will continue to try to provide that information on a quarterly basis. I don't want to be too redundant, but I want to give you updates. Tom and I have talked about it, I think quarterly will help just kind of see where we're at in the progress on some of the.
It's a great reminder for all of us.
Yes.
You know, to keep up with the projects, and that's what Tom was helping us do tonight, I think. Mayor, we have a, a voice scout in the audience.
That was my last thing, would you mind coming up and telling us a little bit about your name? Yes, please.
We're gonna put you on the spot.
We are, so tell us a little bit about yourself and where you go to school?
Uh, hi, my name is Sedger McCarron, um, excuse me. I did, uh, Smyrna High School. Uh, my troop is Troop Two Nineteen at McKendry and United Methodist Church downtown, and just glad to be here.
Great, and are we earning a badge tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what we're here for?
Yes, ma'am.
And which badge is that?
Citizenship in the company.
Great, well, we are glad to have you and, um, glad that.
Who's this lovely lady with you?
That's my mother.
Oh, okay, good.
Well, we're glad to have you, and, um, if there's anything we can do to be of service to you, don't hesitate to ask.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Anything else? Those of you out there, don't forget Valentine's Day is Thursday, don't forget your, um, Valentine, and.
Not everybody has a personal shopper for Valentine's, right?
Obviously, I'm gonna have to go get my own Valentine, 'cause, uh, the message is not getting across, so, um, maybe Britt will remember.
You might want to talk to Tim.
If there's nothing else to come before this board, then we are adjourned, thank you.